Remind everyone to please mute your audio when you're not speaking and please do state your name and your, uh, state your name prior to making a comment or a motion or a second for an action and I thank you for that. I'll ask that each commissioner respond with a here when I call out his name, starting with Commissioner Doan.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Here.
And Commissioner Sanders, no response as yet, but I, Commissioner Bagnall, I am here. So I think we can move forward with this and move to Commissioner Communications and the reports of meetings attended. And sticking with this strict alphabetical order, I will start with Commissioner Doan, your meetings attended, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I completely zipped over a part of the agenda I should not have zipped over. We are supposed to, before we do the Commissioner Communications, we do the reports by the CEO and the management staff. So, Tom, our CEO, I'll let you take that over.
Thank you. You tricked me there, President Bagnall. I thought, I thought it slipped my mind, so I was like, huh, okay. So, good evening.
It was me, I'm sorry.
So, good evening, Commissioners. So, I'm gonna take control here and see if it works and looks like it is. All right, so Portland cryptosporidium results for the month of March 2021. The Portland Water Bureau reported a total of four cryptosporidiumosis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run Headworks. The Oregon Health Authority has determined that the public does not need to take additional protections at this time. Portland Water Bureau will continue increased sampling four times per week until there are at least three weeks without any detections. Complete results of Portland's cryptosporidium monitoring are posted on the city's website. And rather than meeting, reading that whole chain there, I'm just gonna say, uh, go to the, go to Portland's website and you can access that link. Okay, collections plan. The collections effort is underway and progress is being made with the irrigation and current resident customers. Residential customers are applying for the Customer Emergency Assistance Program, which is being administered by TVWD Customer Service Agents. Coordination with Clean Water Services is going well, with regular meetings occurring at the leadership and staff levels. Customer Service will provide an update at the May 4th Board of Commissioners' work session. So, we are making progress on that and we are trying to position ourselves for any of the cares money that right now we're hearing probably end of May before that money would be available for our customers who would qualify. Uh, the Aloha Business Association recognizes TVWD. Thanks to Commissioner Jim Doan and PE Joel Bennett, Assistant Director of the Willamette Water Supply Program, for working on a short video which highlights the Willamette Water Supply Project. The video premiered at the April Aloha Business Association meeting and is available on the ABA website. TVWD has been a longtime member of the Aloha Business Association where Commissioner Doan, PE, represents the district. So I want to thank both Commissioner Doan and Joel Bennett for doing that and representing the district well. Children's Clean Water Festival goes virtual for 2021. TVWD sponsors and provides staffing for the Children's Clean Water Festival, a water-based field trip for 4th grade students from the Tri-County Metro area. This year, the sponsors created six virtual water lessons that are being made available to youth and classrooms. Youth Education Coordinator Frank Reed was featured in a demonstration on how water is treated for safe drinking. The virtual lessons can be found at virtual.cleannwaterfestival.org. Uh, April Talking Water Event was held today, I believe, at noon and consists of a repeated topic featuring the Operations Division Manager Pete Boone, who will explain to, who explained to customers how their water system works with an under-the-street and inside-the-system view of how high-quality water is processed and delivered. These events continue to attract large numbers of customers each month and I just want to thank Pete. I got a preview of this presentation, I just thought it was outstanding and just well-done and I, I just think it's a great way to communicate with our customers about how our water system works. Uh, so, onto the Safety Minute and Department Report. I'm gonna turn this over to Pete Boone, the Water Operations Division Manager, and he will present the Safety Minute this evening. Mr. Boone and Zach Limberg, an Engineering Associate, will jointly present the Department Report.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Thank you, President Bagnall and Commissioners. So yeah, tonight I have the pleasure of talking about some great work that, that some folks have been doing here, but before we jump into that, we will have a safety moment. And isn't it wonderful that we're only in April and we get to talk about sunscreen? We've been having some great weather around here and it's a good reminder, especially early in the season, to, to take protection before we go out in the sun because our, our skin just isn't used to it after the typical Oregon winter months. So, make sure you get good coverage, make sure you apply sunscreen about 30 minutes before you go out into the sun and you want to make sure you reapply often, so every couple hours you're gonna have to add to it to make sure that you have a good layer of protection. SPF 30 is, is plenty, the higher, the higher numbers really don't provide that much marginal difference. And sunscreen does expire, so if you've had it for over three years, it's time to get a new bottle. So, enjoy the sun while it lasts. I think we're, I think we're gonna be back to the rainy weather here for a little bit longer, but sure has been nice. And I'll jump right in. So, so Zach and I are gonna talk about an update to a presentation that you saw last summer, so, and, and it's a, it's a pretty neat effort that's been going on for about the last year here at the district with, with folks from across the organization taking a hard look at water quality and, and really making some positive improvements in that front. So, so who this group is, I, I get to talk about it tonight, but really this is, this is the great work of, of others here at the district that have really been making the difference here. So, this, this team, this task force includes engineers, operators, water resources staff, GIS folks, really a cross-section of the organization, coming together and, and putting their, putting their skillsets to work at, really making a positive difference. And this is something that, that COVID presented this opportunity to us. So, if you think back in March of, of 2020, when, when the coronavirus was, was really ramping up and, and we were grappling with how to deal with that, we had to make some real changes to how we, how we work and, and how we especially work in the field. So, folks that had been working in a group setting and crews, we, we isolated them out so that they wouldn't be interacting with each other nearly as much as an exposure control measure. And so we had a lot of, a lot of single-unit resources, we call them, folks working solo in the field. And so, we were able to kind of pivot and, and take advantage of that opportunity and do some other great things, including collecting a bunch of data about the water that's, that's throughout the distribution system. So, once we started gathering this data and, and putting it in a format that was really usable, it, it became clear that we had some real opportunities for improvement. And so we formed this task force and got these folks pointed in this direction of, of looking for opportunities, looking for areas where we could improve water quality, finding, finding different scenarios and different alternatives for, for what we could do, what we could put into place and, and making that happen. And, and really the, the objective here in the end game is preparing for 2026 when we bring the Willamette Supply online. So, the water, water quality will be different. So right now we have a blend of Joint Water Commission and Portland Water throughout our system. We will have a blend in the future of Joint Water Commission and Willamette Water. And so they, they have different parameters and, and we need to learn how, how those interact in our system and how we can move water around deliberately and, and manage water age and water quality. So we've been making a lot of, a lot of headway on this and it's been really, really fun to watch. So, this focus so far has been on managing that source blend like I talked about and really controlling water age and chlorine residual in, in the distribution system. So let's talk about chlorine for a minute, just how important that is. So, prior to the use of chlorine in, in drinking water, about 100 years ago, 120 years ago, people got a lot of diseases from drinking contaminated water. And, and it was a common pathway for, for illness and disease because there's bacteria, there was viruses and, and different microbes and pathogens. So, some smart folks in Europe figured out that with a, with a small dose of chlorine, they could take care of those, those bacteria, those viruses and, and provide a layer of protection that, that would last in that water and keep people safe. So, it started in Germany and England in the 1890s, Jersey City was the first in the U.S. and in the early 1900s. And you can see on the graph that it just had a dramatic impact on public health. So, so chlorine is, is important, like I said, it, it provides that barrier in our water and, and it doesn't take much. So we talk about a target residual of around one part per million in, in the water system. It does decline over time, which is why water age is an important factor. It can also decline for other reasons like the blending of chloramines and free chlorine like we do with, with the Portland and JWC water. But even as that chlorine declines and, and the residual is less, it doesn't mean it's not safe to drink, it's just, it's, it's a little bit less of that protective barrier that we have in there. But again, can't overstate the importance of chlorine in the water, it's really one of the greatest public health advancements that we've had in the last century. So, important stuff, we, we need to do a really good job of maintaining that chlorine residual in our system. So how do we do that? Number one, and this is where, this is where the task force has, has really shined, is, you know, this requires up-to-date data, you know, this, this chlorine residual is always changing in the system and so we, we have to be out there sampling and, and collecting that data and, and processing it into a form that's, that's usable. And as we've all learned over time, you, you can't turn back the clock on aging. So, we don't retreat our water once it's in our distribution system. We, we don't have measures in place currently to boost that chlor, chlorination level. And so, really what we need to do is use that water up and, and manage how we bring it in and, and move it around in the system. And one of the important ways that we can do that is to keep it moving. And, and there, there can be areas of our system where, where water just goes to stay and the only way it can leave is, is when it is consumed by our customers through their plumbing systems and their taps. So, if demand is low, that conversion can take a while. And so we've been investigating with different ways to keep that water moving throughout our system, both up and down the hills to, to keep it fresh, keep it mixed with, with fresh supply that's coming in. So, don't want to be too, too redundant, but really the, the, the big one that we can do to control water age is use it up. So we want this stuff to, to go out to our customers. We don't want to bring too much in, we don't want to have our supply set too high because then we can end up with, with more storage than we need in our reservoirs and it just takes that much longer to use it up. So, and if we do have water that's, that's sat in our system for, for a little longer than we like and, and we see the chlorine dropping off, we can always flush that. But we do, we'd rather not waste it, so we, we like to just use it as it, as it's needed by our customers. We try to cycle our reservoirs and that means, you know, filling them up, letting them drain back down, and that brings that fresh water in and mixes it. And, and also letting it flow back down hills and into lower pressure zones, keeps that water, keeps that water moving, keeps it mixing. It does cost us a little bit of extra energy, so if we, if we pump water up the hill and then let it come back down, we've, you know, we've had to pay to pump it. But for the benefit of water quality, we've, we've been seeing the benefits in that. So, what you're gonna see here is that visualization of, of the sampling data and this is what's, what's been just so important to letting, letting our operators, our engineers and others see what's going on in the system and then be able to take action to, to intervene and make changes in that. So, we've been doing this for about a year now. We do a weekly dataset where we collect about 100 samples from across the distribution system. We measure chlorine residual, we measure conductivity, which tells us what source or what blend that water is at a particular spot. We also check the temperature, so, and then we can use those things to obviously create maps and, and watch how, how the system changes over time. This particular map that you're looking at represents chlorine residual, it's, it's the level of chlorine in the, in the water. In general, the, the green and blue is good, that's about that one part per million level. And as it gets to orange and red is, is when we look at, start trying to move that water around and, and either flush it off, mix it up, but, but to refresh it. So, very valuable tool here and it's, it's helped us as we, as we work on this stuff. So I'll give you just a, a brief example here before I hand this off to Zach and he can talk about some of the hydraulic modeling that, that he's done to support the group. So I'll talk about our North Road Reservoir. So this is a reservoir, it's in our 820 pressure zone, it's up in the west hills of Portland, a little bit north of Laidlaw Road. It's a 3 million gallon tank and it's served by a long, a fairly long run of, of pipe that acts as both the inlet and the outlet, single pipe feeding this tank. So water gets pumped up the hill from our 435 pressure zone, goes all the way up to North Road. And then when the pumps turn off, the water has to drain back through that same pipe and, and out into the distribution system to our customers. So, there's a big volume in there that kind of sloshes back and forth, or at least in the past, that's what it did. And, and so the water age would increase, we'd see the residual drop down, and this has always been a challenge in our, in our system. And this is what it looked like over time. So here's about a week's worth of data from a year ago. The red line here shows that, that measured chlorine residual and the blue line represents the, the water level in the tank. So you can see the water level in the tank fluctuates as we pump water into it, it drains back down. Chlorine responds kind of the same way. So that fresh water getting pumped into the tank gives it a little dose of chlorine, but as that water then leaves the tank back into the, into the system, we, we lost our residual and, and we had a hard time getting that up to a, to a one part per million that we like. So we wanted to give that water somewhere to go. Instead of, instead of pushing it back and forth in that big pipe, we wanted to induce some more demand on that, that part of the, the distribution system. And we did that by adding automation and controls to an existing pressure regulating valve. So what that valve does is drop this water from the 820 pressure zone back into the, into the 575, so, so further down the hill. And it, and it gave it somewhere to go, let us cycle it through there. And it's really had a dramatic impact on, on the water quality up in this area. So, a couple of things represented on this graph. As part of this, this, this implementation, we actually drained and refilled the North Road Reservoir. So we wanted to start fresh with a fresh batch of water. So we did that and when we brought it back online, we started dropping that water back to the 575 pressure zone. So we started with about a million gallons a day. So we're gonna, we've got a 3 million gallon tank, we're gonna take a third of that and each day we're gonna, we're gonna drop it back down the hill. And over time, that's gonna, that's gonna turn over and, and keep itself full of fresh water. And it's working really well. So you can see here, we've been maintaining that, that one part per million or even higher of a chlorine residual, getting a really good turnover in the tank. And then we can start to play with that flow rate that's coming back down the hill because, like I said before, we're, we're adding energy into that water, we're pumping it up the hill and then we're, we're giving that energy back, right? So we're, we're gonna drop it back down the hill. So if we can minimize that daily, daily volume but still get the benefits of the, of the water quality, that's, we want to find that sweet spot. So we started at a million gallons a day, we've dropped that to half a million gallons a day and you can see this, this stepwise pattern. So we're only dropping that water down when we're not filling the tank. So we pump up, we drop down, we pump up, we drop down. And again, it's, it's worked really well to, to keep a nice residual in that tank. So, there's one more thing we're gonna put in place here, we're, we're going to install a mechanical mixer in this tank and that will keep that, the water that's in the tank itself well-mixed, well-blended and, and so it'll have a nice steady chlorine residual throughout the, the profile of the water there. So, kind of a cool example, one of the, one of the ways we've been improving water quality in, in this part of the system and, and the task force has done a really good job with this. So, I will hand this over to Zach and he can tell you about the stuff that he's been working on with hydraulic modeling.
Thanks, Pete. This is Zach, so I do some of the hydraulic modeling for the district and some of those things that I do are, take the recommendations from the group of operators and engineers that are in the task force and find the easiest option that's gonna work for us. So I can, I have the, the ability to, to model these ahead of actually making them so we can try a, a bunch of different options, which is always the best solution that we can get out of those. And so we're looking for an average water age that's lower when we go into these situations. That's kind of a rough estimate of chlorine residual as Pete was talking about. And so the model's a little fancy and it tracks all the water volumes through the, the piping networks and the, the reservoirs to calculate that. So I can show you a example of the 650 pressure zone, if you'd like to go to the next slide, Pete. So, this is actually a model of the same area, so there's the North Road Tank up in the 820 zone that actually feeds into the 650 zone and then when the North Road Tank is being filled, it's being pumped out from the Thompson Pump Station from the 435. And the, a quick guide to, to what's going on for some of these numbers that I'm about to show you. Like kind of a rough target for a good chlorine residual is about a week of water age, so that's like 160 hours and then, you know, 300 and 700 or two weeks in a month, just as a rough reference. But, things the model doesn't do is always accurately reflect exactly what's going on in the model. There's a lot of old stuff in the, in the actual water system, some small one-inch pipes connecting things that improves the flow, but you know, isn't always tracked back in the model or some operations that Pete's got going on that's, you know, always evolving and it's hard to track in the model as well. So if you'd like to advance the next slide. So this is a nice little graph of a problem area we had in the 650. So this is tracking water age over a simulation. It starts with the whole water system, assuming all the volumes of water have an age of zero, so that kind of works its way out through the simulation. You can see the first 200 hours there, the age just increases as the water and the pipes moves out. And then you kind of get to the reservoirs, having to turn those over in order to get the, the water that's not exactly aged to the age it should be at, at that spot in the reservoir. And then you kind of get to the steady state where you can see some of the patterns that are going on. You actually see the, the sharp downward spikes when the pumps kick on and push that water into the 650 zone and then it, you know, retreats back up to the higher age. So you're seeing around 500, which you know was a little around two weeks, week and a half. So, that's some of the, the older water that we're trying to get rid of. If you'd like to go to the next slide. So we tried putting a jumper in the model, so taken kind of the same approach that we did in the, the 820 zone. We'd take some high-pressure water from the 650 and push that into the 575 zone. And so this created some flow and you can see there's still some of the same high points in the water age, but the average age is kind of what's important here, which has been moved down by the volume of water that's flowing through kind of this normally dead end in our system. So we're seeing a lower age in this and then we also had another approach, if you'd advance the slides, to an auto flusher, we, we thought maybe that would work. So we tried that in the model. Auto flusher is just something we attach to a hydrant just to turn over some water traditionally at a dead end or a part of the system that has some chlorine residual problems. And the setting on this we put was, we thought it'd be appropriate to do about every two weeks to turn over some of the system and move it out. So you can see there's kind of that same increase of the water age. You can see that 45-degree angle kind of happened roughly every 600 hours roughly in here, so that's about every two weeks you get that new water pushed into the system and age in the pipes as it's pushed out. So you can see that there's the flushing working and pushing new water into the system, but then the old water is still in those pipes right after the freshly flushed water. So, that old reservoir water would still work its way into the 650. So, we didn't see as much average age decrease as we would have liked and had, you know, kind of a comparable cost to the, the jumper. And if you'd like to go to the next slide. So, that's kind of my role in the water quality task force, I'll just take a bunch of the options that we look through, you know, the operators, the guys with the experience out in the field have a good idea of what's, what's going on, sometimes what's needed and I'll just work through some of the different options we have. And this one happened to be that a jumper was a good, a good idea for this spot in the zone. So Pete, if you want to summarize it all for me, that'd be great.
Yeah, thanks Zach, great, great to look at one of the aspects of, of the task force and, and how, how a diverse team of folks is, is coming together to, to look at some of these issues. It's been pretty, pretty successful. So, future areas of focus that the, the group's gonna look at, so another jumper, and so we talk about a jumper, that's just a pipe that's, that will drop water down to the next pressure zone below it. There's a particular spot, you can see almost right in the middle of the map that's orange, that's our 513 pressure zone, it's just one of those that, that doesn't have an outlet other than, than, than customer consumption. So historically, that's been a spot of some higher water age. We're making some changes, actually even today, folks are out there working on some valving and, and a new jumper that'll, that'll help improve water quality in that area. Our Springville Reservoirs, so we've got 20 million gallons of water in the 435 zone that is also at the end of a fairly large diameter, a single pipe that, that feeds in and out of those tanks, looking at different ways we can, we can manage that water age. And then the post-summer conversion, so at the end of our, our peak demand, our summer season, we've got a lot of, a lot of water in the system and our, our demand will drop off pretty dramatically in, in the month of September. And so then it can be, you've got this, this water in storage, it tends to be pretty warm because the weather's been warm and that could have an adverse impact on that, on that residual. So we want to, we want to get that conversion going, we'll probably flush some of that to waste to really encourage that to happen quickly this year. So we learned a lot last fall collecting the data and we'll, we'll use that to our advantage. But like I mentioned at the beginning, really the, the overall goal of this is preparing for 2026 when we bring the Willamette online. So, it's been successful, I'm really, really happy to watch the team do this work and, and make these improvements. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Other questions from the board? Pete and Zach, thank you very much for the presentation. I, you know, I always find your presentations so interesting and one of the things that I think is interesting to our customers and to everybody is to think about, you know, water quality and unlike wine, water doesn't get better with age and it's really nice to see that you guys are working hard to keep it moving through the system and to keep it fresh.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Bagnall, if I could just add on a couple of comments, I, I know Pete's mentioned it a few times, but one of the most impressive thing about this task force is one of the most impressive thing about this task force is the the different discipline of folks that came together to look at problematic issues that we face on a day to day basis. And how they came together to, you know, really make lemonade out of lemon during COVID time and and use additional tools, develop tools to make our water quality even better than than what we're used to seeing. And I just want to give a shout out to our folks in operations who were really critical and and folks out in customer services who helped us collect a lot of data to make make the models work. And it's rare that you find a modeler that can actually present like Zach. So I want to thank Zach for coming to the commission tonight to present this presentation, make this presentation. And there were other folks that we wanted to bring on, but other things were happening. So I I just I we appreciate your support and all the work that we do and I'm always so proud of all of our folks when when they come to you and talk to you about what we do engineering and operations. So thank you.
Oh, thank you again. And I appreciate very much. I'm sorry, Pete, that I did not get to hear the Talking Talking Water report today. I had another obligation. But I'm sure it was great, like your stuff always is.
Thank you.
Thank you for tonight's presentation. And and now I guess we do move on to where I was trying to go steps ago, when I wasn't supposed to to Commissioner Communications and the reports of the meetings attended. Unless, Tom, you had anything else for the CEOs report?
I don't. Just very proud of the team.
As you should be. They are one heck of a bunch.
Yes, they are.
So reports of meetings attended. I will keep with alphabetical order and start with Commissioner Don, if you will, please.
Okay, I married a woman whose name was Walker. So I was always at the beginning of things and she was always at the end. And she still resents that. But anyway, on the
I so understand that. My maiden name was Steel Smith. And when I married into Bagnall, I thought I won the freaking lottery. Suddenly I was just ahead of every list.
All right. She's still got a B when we got married. So and I guess being toward the end of the the alphabet didn't help much. It didn't hurt anything either. Okay, we had a pre meeting on April 5 to discuss items that were anticipated to come up at the Joint Water Commission. But they were passed, pretty much passed over. On the 7th of April, I worked on the the video for the Loa Business Association. And then on the 8th of April was the Loa Business Association meeting. On the 9th was the meeting of the Joint Water Commission and the Barney Joint Operating Commission. On the 12th, I attended a meeting of virtually of the Westside Economic Alliance. And it was really fascinating about you know, where we're headed as far as post pandemic and economic growth. And it looks pretty good. On the 13th, I attended a virtual meeting concerning inlet and outlet works as it applies to Skoggins Reservoir. And then today, the 21st, the regular meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Don. Moving smoothly and alphabetically to Commissioner Duggan, your meetings attended.
Okay. On the 23rd of March, I attended the First Budget Workshop, where we had a virtual tour of the district. On March 24th, I attended the virtual forum where the Willamette Water System GIS tool was was highlighted by our Scott Fortman. He did a fantastic job in showing all the the neat mapping things that are going on with the WWSS. On the 1st of April, I attended the regular monthly meeting of the WWSS. On the 8th, I attended our second budget workshop. On the 14th of April, I attended the Washington County CPO Number One Meeting where the May elections were briefly discussed. And the Filbert Street Project, which is a project building a new sidewalk in the Terre Linda area from Murray to Salzman was discussed. And then a presentation was made about the OSU Extension Service, which runs the Master Gardener Program and other other services to to Washington County. On the April 14th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee Meeting where it's our our regular one third of the year meeting in preparation for the June meeting. On the 19th, I attended the Washington County Commission's State of the County Presentation, which was very interesting. Each commissioner had a little thing to share about their vision of the county as it emerges from COVID-19. Earlier today, I had the pleasure of attending the Talking Water virtual forum and like Pete Boone showed us just in the General Matters Report. He had some fantastic slides and graphics showing all about our distribution system. And it 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 was a really well done presentation. And I think staff should be really proud of of how that went this afternoon. There were some really tough questions asked and answered. So that that was really a a great virtual forum. And then tonight's meeting. So that that's my busy April so far.
That is a busy April. You had a lot of stuff. And I think I see from the attendance list that Commissioner Sanders has been able to join us. So your meetings attended, Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you. I apologize. Work called. And I only have two meetings to report. The Second Budget Committee Meeting on April 8 and tonight's General Business Meeting.
Well, there you go. Short, but sweet.
Very short.
Commissioner Schmidt, how about you?
April 6th, I attended a meeting with Tom about the filter issue that we have at the treatment plant. And on the 9th, I did Joint Water Commission Barney Reservoir Quarterly Meeting, which consisted of updates and financial reports. And tonight's regular board meeting. And that's all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. And for myself, I have several meetings. The on the 23rd of March, I had the First Budget Committee Workshop. And on the 5th of April, I met with the CEO and with our Chief Engineer, Ms. Pack, and with Dave Kraska to talk about the JWC Basin work and concerns they had about that. On the 8th of April, I met with again with the Budget Committee for the second workshop, like everybody else. On the 9th of April, the Joint Water Commission and Barney Barney Commission, as was stated earlier, to talk about the budget and project updates going on with those. On the 12th, I attended the Westside Economic Alliance Local Economic Landscape Forum. And, you know, the news is better than one might have thought. So that that was kind of encouraging. On the 19th, I had an investigative interview on a personnel matter affecting the district. And of course, tonight's board meeting for district business. So since I was last, we will move now to topics to be raised by commissioners. And do we have any topics to be raised? Not hearing any. We will go to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items that are on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. My understanding is that we have Mr. Joe Brinkman, who has notified us that he wishes to speak to the board during the public comment period. And I would just like to remind Mr. Brinkman that each person is limited to five minutes unless an extension is granted by the board.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
I hear you.
Okay, great. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is well. My ma- my name is Joe Brinkman. I'm one of the volunteers for the John Pelham Memorial Marker at Southwest Walker Road over by the 217 Overpass. We were looking to use the bulk water system hydrants to tote water to what to water flowers in the memorial tree there. We're asking maybe the possible if the administrative fee and the hydrant permit fee could be waived. Otherwise, the water for the flowers could be really expensive at $510 and $225 respectively. Is there any way that that could possibly happen or be considered at a later time?
Well, I I would say, Mr. Brinkman, that I would advise you to work closely with staff. We we do have some pretty restrictive bond covenants that prohibit us from providing free service. But there are some opportunities for waiving certain fees. So please do work with the staff and I'm sure they will be happy to to work with you and see which which portions of fees can be waived.
Yes, we expect to pay for the water and all that. Just the administrative fee and the hydrant permit fee are kind of high to get water for flowers and so forth like that. And that would be a really convenient for us to do because there's a fire hydrant actually down the street from there that we could use instead of toting the water from home. But yeah, that would be that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
I understand. And I and I'm sure that staff stands ready to work with you on this.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us tonight.
All right. It was interesting listening in all the activities.
Well, we're, you know, it's COVID and all that, but we're still busy. Like everybody, we all have our our things.
Thank you. I'll sign off now and let you guys get back to business.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brinkman. Nice to hear from you.
Stay well, everyone. Bye bye.
Moving to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items that are requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require separate discussion. We only have one item on our consent agenda tonight. And that is to approve the March 17, 2021, regular meeting minutes. So do I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Commissioner Duggan. So moved.
This is Commissioner Schmidt, second.
So Commissioner Duggan has moved and Commissioner Schmidt seconded to to approve the consent agenda. And I would ask the district recorder to provide a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Well, that is unanimous. So the motion passes. Moving to the business agenda. We have only one item on our business agenda, and that is to consider adopting Resolution 0321, which is a resolution transferring general fund materials and services appropriation to the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund Materials and Services Appropriation for the biennial budget 2019-21. And we'll have a staff report from our CFO, Paul Matthews.
Well, good evening, President Bagnall, Commissioners. Tonight's agenda item is going to be pretty short. So I'll get get right with it. Tomorrow night, we'll be having our Budget Committee Meeting. And I've I guess I'll wear my welcome out at that meeting and try to be respectful of your time here tonight. What we plan to talk about tonight actually is transferring some appropriations authority from the District's General Fund to the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund. So I want to talk a little bit about the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund. Talk about some of the savings that we've experienced through COVID that we are proposing be used for the Customer Assistance Fund. And then I'll talk about the actual proposed transfer appropriations now that works under Oregon Local Budget Law. Answering any questions that you have. And the last item I have on my list here is on a monthly basis. I give you an update on the financial performance of the district. And I show that as an optional item because the slides are included in the deck that was sent out to you. And I can answer any questions that you may have from that slide deck. And of course, if you'd like, I'll go through the presentation as well. So then I'm going to move on. First, the a little bit about the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund. It's a fund that is used to assist customers on an emergency basis that are having problems meeting their paying their water bills. It is funded with donations from the district, from board members, from some of our staff and from customers. Those donations are put into a fund. All the interest that is earned on the donations within that fund stays within the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund. And all that money then is used to assist customers through what we call our Customer Emergency Assistance Program. So we have a CEAF, which is the fund that holds the money, and a CEAP, which is the program that dispenses the money to assist those customers in need. The eligibility for customers is generally determined by a third party. During COVID, we're doing something a little different on an emergency basis. But we use a third party to make those determinations. And TVWD provides the accounting services for those funds. Through the COVID process, you heard a little bit from Pete and and his presentation as well as all year long, that we've had to change some of our operations here at the district. And some of those things that we do, some of the team building things that we routinely do, we haven't been able to do because of COVID. An example of that is our traditional holiday lunch where we get all hands together and we share a meal right before the holiday season. Similarly, we have an employee recognition event, which is usually in the in the summer period where we recognize the employees for the various things that they've done throughout the year. We also have a sustainability committee and the sustainability committee raises funds and does other things to support the district's efforts and sustainability. But they haven't been able to use all these funds either because of COVID. So when we look at these events and the amount that we weren't able to portage, it was about $8,400. And based on a recommendation that came from some of our employees, we thought it was appropriate to transfer that money to the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund to help our customers that are having problems paying their water bills during the COVID-19 crisis. So how does that work? The proposed transfer appropriation, as I mentioned, it's allowed under Oregon Local Budget Law. This is not a supplemental budget. This is a transfer of appropriations. So what we would do is first transfer appropriations from the material services line item appropriations categories, we sometimes refer to them, to an interfund transfer. And then transfer that to the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund, which is Fund 43, and make it available to fund the Customer Emergency Assistance Program, which is accounted for as a material service line item. So that's essentially the proposal here is to transfer $8,400 from the General Fund to the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund, recognizing a reduction in our spending appropriations within the material service line item, the General Fund, to pay for that transfer. Without a last answer, any questions that you may have about this proposal? Are there any questions?
I just want to say I think this is wonderful. I am so pleased that TVWD management has recommended this to us because, you know, having been a budget officer in the past, I understand that money's not spent from our materials and services budget falls to the bottom line and is used to offset needed rate increases in the following year. And that benefits all of our customers. But what this action does is said, it says, more specifically, we have saved money and let's target that money not to go to all customers, but to go to particular customers in need. And that's a that's a wonderful thing. And I am 100% in support of that. And I I hope the rest of the board will be as well.
Are there any questions for me?
Hi, Paul. This is Tom.
Hi, Paul. This is Todd.
Good evening, Todd.
Good evening. Um, my only question is, I know uh earlier this quarter, we've talked about delinquent payments and the dollar amounts associated with it and um trying to uh reacquire those delinquent payments. This isn't a large amount of money in comparison to what's um, let me say quote-unquote, missing or hasn't been paid. Is there a way to assure that this money goes to uh people in true need versus those folks that uh one of the things we've kind of considered is who are just sort of gaming the, we aren't going to shut your water off right now situation?
Yeah, so a couple, couple of things about that, that uh, first of all, the third-party uh qualifier that we traditionally use, that's really their role. There's uh, we've gone through an analysis of should TVWD, for example, qualify customers for needing uh uh financial assistance? And that presents all kinds of challenges, including bringing information to the district uh that that we don't have a desire to hold, people's financial information, uh social security numbers, things of this nature. Uh, so we've outsourced that to a third party called Community Action. And they specialize in discerning which customers are in true financial need and those that are not. Uh, they administer, uh, for example, the LIHEAP program, which is the low-income uh home energy assistance program. It's not about water, but it's the same concept of helping people pay their uh uh their electric, uh natural gas uh eh, for that matter, even firewood. They help uh pay for all those things that are used to heat uh homes. So they've got that specific expertise. They've got the ability. They have the infrastructure to do that. Uh, and so we really rely on those folks to be able to discern who are truly in need of assistance versus uh customers that uh may simply just not be paying because of the uh temporary moratorium on uh on shutting off customers. Uh, did I answer your question, Dr. Sanders?
You answered my question beautifully, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there other questions?
If there are no other questions, I'll end with a staff recommendation. Uh, staff recommends the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution zero three twenty-one, transferring a general fund material and service appropriations to the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund Material and Service Appropriation for the Biennial Budget Period twenty nineteen twenty-one. Thank you.
This is Jim Don. So moved.
This is Todd Sanders. I s- Go for it, Jim. This is Todd Sanders, and I second.
So it has been moved by Commissioner Don and seconded, I do believe, by Commissioner Sanders. To adopt Resolution zero three twenty-one. So um, could I please ask for the district recorder to do a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Bagno?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all. The motion passes. And there no being, there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned. But please do, everyone, refer to the executive session calendar invi- invitation for the link to join an executive session that follows this meeting. Uh, which is like in four minutes. Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye. See you soon.